Thank you, Mr. Chair. In all due respect to Councilmember Onishi, I would prefer to wait till 10:00. And at least the councilmembers that are support are gonna be here, are present.
Okay, I think that's a good thing to do, just as a courtesy to him. Okay, so given that, let's start with the top of the agenda. Mr. Clerk, Communication 489. Unless, excuse me, unless there's any other requests for anything else out of order? No? Okay. 489.4, Mr. Clerk.
Communication 489.4. External Quality Control Review of the Legislative Auditor's Office for the period of July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2012. From Council Chair Jay Yoshimoto dated December 18, 2013. This review was conducted by the peer review team in accordance with the standards and guidelines established by the Association of Local Government Auditors.
Okay, councilmembers, this is a communication from myself, but I'm gonna withdraw it because there was a procedural error in the numbering, so rather than, well, basically, we have to withdraw because it was misnumbered. So I'm gonna be withdrawing this at this time, and it'll be sent forward at a future date with a correct numbering. Okay, so that's withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, Communication 576.
Communication 576 recuts the acceptance of a donation of six large wreaths, two 72-inch trees, garlands, and ornaments with a combined value of $500. From Finance Director Nancy Crawford dated December 18, 2013, requesting the council's acceptance of the above donation by Tommy Bahamas for the use for use by the Hawaii Fire Department's West Hawaii Fire Stations during the holiday season. Waived, F.C.
May I have a motion to file Communication 576 and accept the donation?
Some...
(laugh) Motion by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Mr. Illegon, almost before she made the motion. Okay. Any discussion on the acceptance of the donation? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Communication 593 appoints a member of the Hawaii State Association of Counties, HSAQ, Executive Committee to the National Association of Counties, NACO Board of Directors. From Councilmember Dennis Fresh Onishi dated December 23, 2013, transmitting a request for the council's approval to appoint HSAQ President Mel Reposo to serve as the NACO Board of Directors. Waived, GREDC.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Communication, I mean, I move to close Communication 593.
Okay, so it's closed file Communication 593 and accept or recommend the appointment of Mr. Mel Reposo to serve on the NACO Board of Directors. Oh, the seconded was by Mr. Kern? Who, did somebody make, oh, okay. Mr. Illegon.
As the Vice Chair for Economic Development and Governmental Relations, I'm gonna do the report, and what's going on is that, um, at HSAQ, there, uh, Gary, Councilmember Gary Hooser, he was the, appointed in that position, and because of scheduling conflicts, um, he was not able to attend the meetings. And now, what is gonna be, um, done is, there's gonna be an appointed position which we are appointing, um, HSAQ President Mel Reposo into the vacant position. So this is the appointment, and I just wanna let you guys, I just wanna let the council know that this is what's going on in HSAQ.
Okay, thank.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Resolution 207-13 designates 2014 as the year of the Hawaii-Grown Orchid. Creates a venue to increase public awareness and interest in the Hawaii-grown orchids and Hawaii Islands Orchid Industry. Reference Communication 498 introduced by Ms. Willie, approved, GREDC-5.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 207-13 made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Illegon? I note that this was introduced by Ms. Willie. She's off-island attending a conference, so I'm not sure if we wanna postpone it or just move it forward. She did not communicate any, anything, at least to me, as far as her wishes. Ms. Poindexter, did you wanna?
She did communicate to me that she would like to see this go forward and to say how she, um, supported, you know, the orchid growers and this, and this resolution, so thank you.
That's helpful. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on 207-13? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 207-13 is approved. Mr. Clerk, next item, 241-13.
Resolution 241-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for miscellaneous baby furniture and bedding for the child and family service, West Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Transfers appropriates $500 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 6, credit same to the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, Kona Prosecuting Attorney, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, child and family service, West Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Reference Communication 546 introduced by Ms. Ford, waived, F.C. Postponed December 18, 2013. Note, there is a pending motion by Ms. Ford and duly seconded by Mr. Kanuha to approve Resolution 241-13.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Since this is already live on the floor, I wanna let councilmembers know that I did receive a communication from Ms. Ford asking that this matter be postponed to February 5th. The Chair would entertain a motion to postpone to February 5th.
Move to postpone to February 5th?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kern, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 243-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for bus passes for the residents of the West Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Transfers appropriates $180 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 6, credit same to Mass Transit Agency, Mass Transit, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services, bus passes, West Hawaii Domestic Abuse Shelter. Reference Communication 548 introduced by Ms. Ford, waived, F.C. Postponed December 18, 2013. Note, there is a pending motion by Ms. Ford and duly seconded by Mr. Kern to approve Resolution 243-13.
Okay, so there's a pending motion. Also, in this matter, I received a communication from Ms. Ford asking that it be postponed to February 5th, 2014. May I have a motion to do that?
Move.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Kern, seconded, I'm not sure, by Ms. Eoff, I believe. Okay, any discussion on the motion to postpone? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 214-243-13 is postponed. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 244-13 transfers and appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for tobacco-free ground signs. Transfers and appropriates $3,000 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 6, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance, other current expenses, building and construction materials, tobacco-free ground signs. Funds would be used to install signs for county parks and facilities. Reference Communication 551 introduced by Ms. Ford, waived, F.C.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 244-13?
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kanuha. Also with this one, councilmembers, I received a communication from Ms. Ford asking that it be postponed to February 5th, 2014. May I have a motion to do so?
Second.
Made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Ms. Eoff, to postpone. Any discussion on postponement? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously to postpone. Okay, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Resolution 252-13 transfers and appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for chairs at the Makai'ao Events Pavilion. Transfers appropriates $8,000 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 7, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Park Maintenance, other current expenses, miscellaneous materials and supplies, Makai'ao Event Pavilion Chairs. Reference Communication 565 introduced by Mr. Kanuha, waived, F.C.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Resolution 252-13.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Comments, Mr. Kanuha?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, highly needed within Makai'ao Pavilion. A lot of the chairs are pretty weak right now. They can only handle a certain amount of weight, and they've been breaking over the last several years, or cracking, so, uh, when they do crack, it pinches people, um, when they do sit, when they sit down on them. So these chairs will be, um, you know, they'll, they'll, heavier weight can, uh, use the chairs, so, huh?
You can't accommodate them?
Yeah.[677.73][677.73](laugh) Uh, so this is just an upgrade on the existing chairs that they currently have, so I ask for your support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kanuha. Any other discussion from councilmembers? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 252-13 is approved. Next item.
Resolution 253-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for the teen dating violence conferences at Pahala High School and Konawaina High School. Transfers appropriates $10,000 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 6, credit same to Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, Committee on Status of Women, Miscellaneous Contract Teen Dating Violence Conference. Reference Communication 566 introduced by Ms. Ford, waived, F.C.
Uh, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 253-13?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Mr. Kanuha. I also received a communication from Ms. Ford asking that this be postponed to February 5th, 2014.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This is postponed to February 5th, 2014. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 254-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for chairs at the Makai'ao Events Pavilion. Transfers appropriates $8,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 8, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance, other current expenses, miscellaneous materials and supplies, Makai'ao Events Pavilion Chairs. Reference Communication 567 introduced by Ms. Eoff, waived, F.C.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 254.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kanuha. Ms. Eoff.
Thank you. Um, this is the other half of the amount of money needed to replace the chairs at Makai'ao, and I'm happy to provide that. Um, Makai'ao is, is between Mr. Kanuha and my district, so, um, we wanted to make sure that the, they would have enough money to get enough chairs for that pavilion. Mahalo for your support.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 254-13 is approved. Next item.
Resolution 255-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for two-floor buffer machines. Transfers appropriates $2,550 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 3, credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance Equipment, Miscellaneous Equipment Floor Buffer Machines. Reference Communication 568 introduced by Mr. Onishi, waived, F.C.
May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Illegon.
Would it be okay if we, um, move on from, um, Mr. Onishi's contingency fund, just in case he has something to say when he does come?
Uh, we could, although these are pretty straightforward. Um, I think we just, we can just go ahead, um, unless you're gonna vote, uh, no.[907.63][907.63](laugh) Anyway, no, no. Um, Mr. Onishi said he's gonna be here at 10 o'clock, so that gives us 10 minutes. Just let me just scan the agenda and see. Uh, I don't see a problem in just moving forward, actually, so what?
Mr. Chair, move to approve Resolution 255-13.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 255-13 is approved. Next item.
Resolution 257-14 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for manhole cover adjustments. Transfers appropriates $4,000 out and from Clerk Council Services, Contingency Relief, Council District 3, credit same to the Department of Public Works, transfer to Highway Fund, manhole cover adjustments. Funds would be used for labor equipment and materials to raise the height of the manhole covers on Kiluaia Avenue that are sunken below the road's surface. Reference Communication 574 introduced by Mr. Onishi, waived, F.C.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 257-14?
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to Mr. Onishi, because I drive that road all the time, and those potholes are definitely, or those manhole covers are definitely a problem, so, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. I'll ditto that, uh, that's, that is very uncomfortable in terms of driving through manhole covers that are really low. Any discussion? Otherwise, no? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 257-14 is approved unanimously. Next item.
Resolution 258-14 authorizes the Office of the Mayor to enter into an agreement with the state of Hawaii Department of the Attorney General pursuant to Hawaii Revive Statute 467 for the Safe Standby Pay Grant to the Hawaii County Police Department. Grant funds of $12,353 would be used towards the county's response to violent sex crimes against women through medical and forensic services. Reference Communication 575 introduced by Ms. Poindexter, waived, F.C.
Motion to approve Resolution 258-14?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Any comment, Ms. Poindexter?
Um, just wanna say mahalo to, uh, the State Department, the Safe, um, Standby Pay Grant, um, to, um, support the sex crimes against women.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 258-14 is approved.
Bill 160, amends ordinance number 13-66 as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. Adds the Parks and Recreation Kahuku Park Main Waterline Improvements Project for $150,000 to the capital budget. Funds for this project shall be provided from general obligation bonds, capital projects, fund, fund balance, and/or other sources. Funds would be used to plan and construct a water, a main water line from Ocean View Well Number 1 to Kahuku Park. Reference Communication 550 introduced by Ms. Ford, approve, F.C., 118. Note, requires 2/3rds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuant to Section 10-6E of the Hawaii County Charter.
May I have a motion to approve Bill 160? Okay, made, motion made by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. Illegon. This was introduced by Ms. Ford. Um, I don't have any requests to postpone this. I assume we can, uh, move forward on this unless there's any other, um, concerns raised by councilmembers. Okay? This seemed pretty, pretty straightforward at committee. Um, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 160 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 161, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 2 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended relating to moving vehicles. Amends Section 24-265, Schedule 13, Yield Location Subsection C, South Hilo by adding Inaola Drive, North Approach adjacent to Parcels 2-4-007, colon, 049, and 2-4-007, colon, 053. Reference Communication 552 introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approve, PWPRC-41.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 161.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 1601 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 162, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 5, Section 24-284 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended relating to parking. Amends Schedule 32, 2-hour parking area subsection C, South Hilo by revising Item 17 to read Kinoole Street, Northeast Makai Side, the first seven stalls southeast of Punahua Street, and revising Item 19 to read Kinoole Street, Southwest Maoka Side, the first seven stalls southeast of Punahua Street excluding the freight loading zone as set forth in Section 24-288, Schedule 36, Freight Loading Zones. Reference Communication 553 introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approve, PWPRC-42.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 162.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 162 moves forward, uh, to second reading. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Bill 163, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 6, Section 24-288 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended relating to freight loading zones. Amends Schedule 36, Freight Loading Zones, subsection C, South Hilo by adding Kinoole Street, Southwest Maoka Side, from a .297 feet southeast of Punahua Street and extending 52 feet in the southeasterly direction. Reference Communication 554 introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approve, PWPRC-43.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 163.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill 163 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 164, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 7 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended, Parking Meter Zones. Amends Section 24-289, Schedule 37, 36-minute Parking Meter Zones by changing the rates to 10 cents for 12 minutes and 25 cents for 36 minutes on portions of Ke'Kaulike and Kinoole Street. Reference Communication 555 introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approve, PWPRC-44.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 164.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 164 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 165, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 7 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended relating to Parking Meter Zones. Amends Section 24-291.1, Schedule 39.1, 2-hour Parking Meter Zones by changing the rates to 5 cents for 15 minutes and 10 cents for 30 minutes and 25 cents for 75 minutes in the county building parking lot on the corner of Alpuni and Pohai Streets during regular working hours of the county. Reference Communication 556 introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, approve, PWPRC-45.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 165.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Mr. Illegon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out, on the committee report, it says that Councilmember Gregor Illegon and Brenda Ford both expressed concerns about the rate change. I just wanna say that I don't have any concerns. I actually support, I support this, because it gives, um, more, uh, minutes for less amount of money. So, I, I just wanted to voice out publicly that I support this change, and I wanna make sure this does happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 165 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 168, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Increases revenues by $12,353 in the federal grant Safe Standby Pay Account and appropriate same to the Safe Standby Pay Account. Funds would be used towards the county's response to violent sex crimes against women through medical and forensic services. Reference Communication 575 introduced by Ms. Poindexter, waived, F.C.
Motion to approve Bill 168?
Okay, seconded by Mr. Illegon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 168 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 169, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Appropriates revenues of $35,000 in the Fire Department Private Contributions Account and appropriate same to the Hawaii Medical Service Association Foundation Emergency Medical Services, EMS Vehicle, Private Motor Vehicle Account. Funds would be used to subsidize the cost of an EMS vehicle for community outreach, education, and emergency response. Reference Communication 578 introduced by Ms. Poindexter, waived, F.C.
Motion to approve Bill 169?
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 169 moves forward to second reading. Next item.
Bill 170, amends ordinance number 13-65 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Increases revenues by $4,000 to the transfer from General Fund Account and appropriate same to the South Hilo Road Materials Account. Funds would be used for labor equipment and materials to raise the height of manhole covers on Kiluaia Avenue that are sunken below the road's surface. Reference Communication 579 introduced by Ms. Poindexter, waived, F.C.
Motion to approve Bill 170?
Again.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill 170 moves forward to second, second reading. Okay, councilmembers, are, are we okay? Wanna move forward? Need a break? Moving forward? Okay, second reading. Mr. Clerk, Bill 145.
Bill 145, amends Section 25-8-19, North Hilo Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, zoning code of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural 20 acres, A-20A, to agricultural 5 acres, A-5A, at Waipunale, North Hilo, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 3-6-005, colon, 003. Applicant John R. Boner, approximately 10.17 acres. The applicant requests a change of zone in order to subdivide the property into two lots of roughly equal size for estate planning purposes including agriculture activities and individual home sites. Reference Communication 491 introduced by Mr. Kern by request, first reading December 18, 2013.
Mr. Kern.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Bill 145.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Illegon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Bill 145 passes second and final reading. Next item.
Bill 1, Bill 147, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 5, Section 24-281 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition as amended relating to parking. Amends Schedule 29, Parking prohibited during certain hours of, on certain streets, Toway Zone, subsection C, South Hilo by deleting existing Item 29 and adding Derby Lane, Northeast Side, from a .27 feet northwest of Wilson Street to a .42 feet southeast of Hoku Street from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Reference Communication 513 introduced by Mr. Kanuha, first reading December 18, 2013.
Mr. Kanuha. Mr. Kanuha.
Move to approve Bill one four seven.
Seconded by Mr. Ilagon. Any discussion, council members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill one forty-seven passes second and final reading unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Bill one four eight, amends Chapter twenty-four, Article ten, Division five, Section two four dash two eight one of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and five edition as amended relating to parking. Certain hours on certain streets to a way zone, subsection C, South Hilo by adding Kalaniana Ole Street South Side from a point eighty-three feet east of the Seaside Restaurant driveway to a point one hundred eight feet west of Loko Aka Street. Reference Communication five one four, introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request, first reading December eighteen, twenty thirteen.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill one four eight.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill one forty-eight, uh, passes second and final reading. Next item.
Bill one four nine, amends Chapter twenty-four, Article ten, Division five, Section two four dash two eight zero of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and five edition as amended relating to parking. Amends Schedule twenty-eight, no parking at any time, subsection C, South Hilo by revising existing Item fifty to read Kalaniana Ole Street South Side from a point one hundred eight feet west of Loko Aka Street to Lele Iwe Street. Reference Communication five one five, introduced by Mr. Kanuha, first reading December eighteen, twenty thirteen.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill one four nine.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill one forty-nine passes second and final reading. Next item.
Bill one five zero, draft two, amends Chapter two, Article thirteen, and Chapter eleven, Article one of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and five edition as amended relating to the County Housing Agency and the Office of Housing and Community Development. Amends the Hawaii County Code two, one, clarify the powers and duties of the Housing Agency; two, recognize the Office of Housing and Community Development, O H C D, as the administrative office charged with ensuring availability of adequate housing accommodations for Hawaii Island; and, three, clarify the powers and duties of the Hawaii House, of the housing administrator who oversees the O H C D and the general administration and operations of the county's housing programs. Reference Communication two five, excuse me, Reference Communication five two zero point two, introduced by Ms. Ford, first reading December eighteen, twenty thirteen.
May I have a motion to approve Bill one fifty, draft two? Okay, Mr. Kern made the motion, seconded by Mr. Ilagon. With respect to this item, I did not receive any request, uh, for a postponement. As I recall, there was consensus, uh, from the Housing, um, Agency, uh, about this amendment. So, with that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill one fifty, draft two, uh, passes second and final reading. Next item.
Bill one five three, amends ordinance number one three dash six five as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Appropriates revenues of sixty-five thousand two hundred, two hundred dollars in the general grants Police Detectives Training Grant Account and appropriate same to the Police Detectives Training Grant Account. Funds would be used to train investigative personnel with the goal of increasing the prosecuting, prosecution success rate for murder and other serious violent crimes in Hawaii County. Reference Communication five two nine, introduced by Ms. Poindexter, first reading December eighteen, twenty thirteen.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Bill one fifty-three?
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill one fifty-three, uh, passes second and final reading. Next item.
Bill one five five, amends ordinance number eleven dash four zero as amended by ordinance number one three dash four seven pertaining to the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing various public improvements described therein. Deletes the following projects: Pool Drainage Covers, five hundred thousand dollars, Banyon Beach Parking Lot, three hundred thousand dollars, and Kalaniana Ole Interceptor Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Two, six point nine million dollars. Funds would be redirected to major maintenance on wastewater and other county facilities, primarily police and fire stations, to include Resolving Americans with Disabilities Act compliance issues. Reference Communication five three one, introduced by Ms. Poindexter, first reading December eighteen, twenty thirteen. Note, two-thirds vote required pursuant to Section forty-seven dash five of the Hawaii Revive Statute.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Bill one fifty-five?
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?